Good evening. Let's go ahead and call the week before. So we're starting our national state. Thank you. And then ask this package, give it to me.
Agents, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Allen? Mrs. Wilkins-Brack?
Present.
Mrs. Booker Conway?
Present.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Present.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Scholter?
Here.
Mr. Stan?
Here.
Mrs. Tyke?
Here.
All members of the council should have received a copy of the latest full-on review. There are no corrections or additions. I'm set the motion to approve the minutes. Move by. Off to the studio. This will go over. Second, how's it going? How is it?
Aye.
Although both? Although it's fair. As you should have received, a copy of our most recent check. Please raise your hands if you prefer receipt. Next item on the customized agenda is public comments. However, we have some special guests for another agenda item. For our invite, Chief Chief Oliver to the podium. To the emotional recognition and Georgetown police.
So good evening. Tonight, we have the privilege to promote two of our officers. The first one I'd like to recognize would be Lieutenant DeSoto. Lieutenant DeSoto has been with our department a little over 12 years. He was an officer and was a field training officer. And then he was moved to the criminal justice or criminal investigation section, where he was our sergeant. And he's been promoted. He's now our first shift commander. He's asked me to pin him. The second officer who I'd like to pin tonight would be Sergeant Behrish. He's been with our department a little over four years now. He's a graduate of Eastern Kentucky University with a bachelor's in criminal justice. He had his wife, Cassie Behrish, along with his mother, Lisa Behrish, in attendance to pin.
Thank you and congratulations. If you would go back to public comments at this point, we will accept comments on all of the issues to speak. In order to enrich their work, they'll sign up. I would ask that each person make two comments about four minutes. In order to allow extra time for all these questions. I'm going to list the written names that they were assigned up. Ken Hale?
Ken Hale. Hi, thank you. Did he?
Thank you.
To hold the button down to be heard.
Did he? I really had planned on being here tonight until later last week, when I found out some disturbing news. Planning on getting ready for the ballgame tonight. But here I am. Does anybody know much about the National Association of Drug Court Professionals? On that board of directors, we have 16 people. Half of them are attorneys or judges. One of the judges is, until last year, November, was the Supreme Justice of the State of Michigan. This is a national council that goes, includes everybody from Michigan to Georgia, people on it, from California to New York. From our state, we have two people on it. One is Dr. Lisa Shannon. She's a professor of social work at Morehead. And the other one is the only police officer listed is the person that was dismissed. I don't, I didn't get the memo. I didn't see any discussion in the election that there was an issue with the police chief. I'm not sure if anybody else did. But I think it is a very poor decision. Unfortunately, my comments come in front of the mayors. And so some of my comments, there may be some explanation for it. But until now, there have been no explanation given to us other than he wants to move in a different direction. What direction is that? I don't know. It wasn't discussed, as far as I know, in the run-up to his election. So I think, you know, this is putting the Georgetown community at risk of losing more officers by, with their morale. I mean, to do this in this kind of environment, where you have states and cities willingly bidding up to get police officers and police chiefs. I think you are taking an action that is not very well understood. There is an option, I believe. Although you can't do it tonight, the city council can request a vote to have a special meeting to reverse this decision. The special meeting will have to take place. So I think it's wise that we consider, people are in office for the first time, and I think there may be a level of understanding that this is, okay, a move that was maybe naive or not well thought through. But I do think it's recoverable. So for the city council, it's up to you what your next move is. Are we going to have another meeting to discuss this? And really decide if we're going to stay with this decision or not? So I don't know the police chief at all. Have no, I never, never met him. But I do know the person who called me and told me he was fired, asked me, was there some kind of charging incident? They were just dumbfounded why he was fired. So I don't know why he was fired. I think it was poor judgment to fire him. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Susan Daniel?
Susan Daniel? Hi. I just want to know why that Chief Bossy was let go. I had volunteered with this police department for 10 years. And I have never seen anything done wrong that wasn't improved or talked about. Chief Bossy was a good man. He brought it up. They had on quality drive, a very, very bad police department. He got out there himself and he weedied it and he landscaped and he had other officers that got out there and helped him. He brought the morale up in our police department. He got the uniforms. The guys looked neat. They respect him. The community respects him. So I would like to know if I could get an answer, why? Why was this man that has done nothing but worked himself to death? And I have been right long and seen him. He has supported his officers. He's been there for his officers. He's been there for his community. I had went out with him when he had visited the elderly. I had went out with him when he has visited the children. We have things for the children. He makes sure that this community is taken care of. Now, it's time this community takes care of him. Angel Tether? Angel?
Hi, my name is Angie Tether. And I'm here regarding the police chief issue. I was watching the ballgame last night. And at the end, the news came on. I decided to watch it. And the news person said that the mayor has decided to go in a new direction, whatever that meant, and get another person to take Chief Bossy's place. And I said to myself, what could the new direction be? There's only one direction. The right direction.
Yes.
The direction, the way the policemen and ladies are. They fight crime. They get the criminal, hopefully. They go to court. They do everything that they need to do. I've never heard anything negative regarding Chief Bossy. And I was trying to figure out, what did he do wrong? So I went to the police department today. And I went inside and I said, is the police chief here? No, I'm sorry, he's not. And I said, I don't blame him. And then I said, do you know why he's being let go? Why he can't come? No, we have no idea. I said, okay. Then, before leaving, I was in the foyer. I decided to take a picture. And it's a picture of inside and it says, we do not lie, cheat or steal. We will not accept any among us who do. That's what it says inside the police department. And it broke my heart because the police chief, I believe, is a good man. And just like the other people who just asked, why? Can we have a response now? Is that possible? I'm really asking a question. Is it possible to have an answer as to why? Please.
I'll make a comment at the end.
At the end? Okay. All right. And it's just very sad that this is happening because I don't know what he did wrong. Thank you.
Audrey Jibiers?
Hello. I am speaking in relation to the immediate firing of Police Chief Mike Bossy. Never in history has there been an effective group of men and women without an effective leader, and the Georgetown Police Department is no exception. They have been an effective and efficient department within this city that has done nothing but flourish under the care of Chief Bossy. In an article written on January 6, 2023, by LAX18, it had a statement from a phone call that they had had with the mayor in response to his decision to immediately fire Chief Bossy. That statement is, the mayor went on to say that he couldn't offer specifics on the decision as he tries to wrap his head around everything happening in his first week in office. So what I am understanding is that you, Mr. Jenkins, have fired an effective leader of this community without just cause or reason because as you stated, you can't even wrap your head around your first week in office yet. As a businesswoman, I have seen this a couple times. And the only reason a new hire has ever fired an impactful employee immediately without just cause, reason or previous warning, was due to personal issues. So I think it would be very helpful at this time for you to clarify your reasoning for firing Mr. Bossy. Thank you.
Teresa Holland?
Good evening. As a soon-to-be-retiree of the Georgetown Police Department, I wanted a chance to speak to council and to you, Mayor. I've been through three chiefs of police, including you, four mayors. I've seen the best and the worst of leadership. Being a leader comes with a great responsibility. People can choose to follow you out of fear, a sense of loyalty, or out of respect. Serving under Chief Bossy for the past 10 years, I can tell you it's been out of tremendous amount of respect. He's been a chief who has led from example by day one. He's always said he will not expect his officers to do something he wouldn't do himself. He has led this department from one that was defeated and disgruntled, which I'm well aware of, to a premier agency in Kentucky. Yes, other agencies use Georgetown Police Department as a gold standard. The professionalism and caliber of officers you see here that come from Georgetown Police Department can be attributed to the work of Chief Bossy. He has expectations of every officer and will hold you accountable to every single one of them. Mayor, you have decided to go in a different direction, which you have every right to do so. I ask you reconsider this action. If Chief Bossy and his leadership are not your vision, I, myself, have major concerns on what your new direction will be. Chief Bossy is a well-respected figure in law enforcement in Kentucky and well beyond the state. The citizens of Georgetown miss his leadership and experience. Mayor, I respect your office and position. But it does not mean I respect the decision you made. Respect was not given to Chief Bossy upon his hiring. After all he has done for this department, this community, he deserved better. Knowing Chief Bossy, he would not want this about himself, but to focus on the department and his officers. These officers will continue to serve this community with the same sense of pride and commitment that it always has had under the direction of interim chief Darren Allgood. Interim chief Allgood will continue to lead these officers, inspire them to be great leaders among this community. My brothers and sisters, stand strong. At this time, I want to thank Chief Bossy for his service and dedication to the Georgetown Police Department, something he deserves.
Karen Glitcher?
Honorable Mayor Jenkins, city council members, friends, neighbors. I'm also here to speak about two things. First, Chief Bossy. And second, another thing that relates to the work that I got to experience in collaborating with Chief Bossy. I'm here in support of him and the work we've done together to address the drug epidemic in Scott County. And I know, Mayor Jenkins, you can fire any department head at will. No just cause. There doesn't have to be a reason. No approval from anyone. And I read, like everybody else, that you let Chief Bossy go because you're moving in another direction. The trust that Chief Bossy and his officers have with one another has come about because of his leadership. I think the culture and the morale of the Georgetown Police Department would be really hard to beat. In 2015, I met Chief Bossy because I decided to fight against the opioid epidemic because I found out my son was addicted to opiates. So I asked Chief Bossy if he would help me get a grant written and we got some money to come into Scott County. And one of the things that we did, and some of you officers may have been there, is we got Narcan training into the police department. I found out at that time, he was already working on a new policy for how to handle overdose calls and other drug-related problems. Some of the things he's done that I'm aware of, and there are many more than this. He has resources and an officer, I think, a resource person who goes out with officers for overdose response calls. And he also promotes the PAL support group. That's Parents of Addicted Loved Ones. The meeting I'm missing tonight because I felt like it was very important to be here. They meet every Monday night at Northside Christian Church. I'm happy to talk to anybody more about that. As you've already heard, the Georgetown Police Department is one of the most progressive agencies in the country, not just the state, in the country. Chief Bossy brought the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative to this agency, probably the third or fourth in the state when it happened. And what that means is that any person suffering from the disease of addiction walks into the police station, and even if they have drug equipment or drugs with them and they ask for help, they'll not be charged. Instead, they're walked through the system toward detox and recovery. They're assigned an angel who guides them in this process, thus the Angel Program. And this is only one example of the direction Chief Bossy has taken the department in. Mayor Jenkins, I hope that you'll share with us sometime tonight or in the near future, the direction you plan to go. And the second reason I'm here is to let you all know that I serve on the Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission. And what that means is I was appointed by the Attorney General. I told you that my son was addicted to opioids. He passed away from an overdose in 2020, Matthew Davidson. Because of that work and my advocacy, I was recommended to the Attorney General to be on this commission. You all may not know this, but over $780 million is coming into our state over the next 17 years. This is the largest settlement since the Tobika settlement. Half of that money goes directly to local government and half is going to be distributed by a grant process that the commission I serve on will be in charge of. We'll decide where this money goes. And I want to know, at some point, I want to sit with you all, I want to find out, where's the Scott County money going to go? Where's the Georgetown money going to go? This is a one-time allotment of money. I also want to let everybody know about the Recovery Ready Communities Initiative. That came out of a program that I work with called the BRIGE Program out of Leadership Kentucky. And two years ago, after I told my story about my son, Matthew, some of those young leaders got together and they said, we need to have a recovery-ready community designation, just like a work-ready community designation. And tomorrow, they're to finalize the template on how we could work toward being a recovery-ready community. And if all of what I've said doesn't lead you to believe that I don't want Scott County to be, or Georgetown, to be one of those first recovery-ready communities, then you're not listening. So in closing, Mayor Jenkins, I wish you a successful administration. I can't imagine the stress you're under right now. I think losing Mike Bossy as police chief is a tremendous loss for our city. I plan to support you in your administration and I hope that we can have a meeting in the future to discuss some of these elements. Thank you.
Sines Crowley?
Good evening. I have two concerns. Mike Bossy. And I don't think you can get rid of perfection. He was perfect for Georgetown. What's inspired, but he was perfect for Georgetown. And it's sad to see him gone. My second thing is the water. Are we going to discuss water tonight?
I'll make the statement on that at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morgan Sullivan?
I'm here on behalf of the police department. For you to fire Mike the way you did is very disrespectful to what he has done for Georgetown. He has built this community up. And he built us better than what Lexington is with all those flipping homicides. You are wrong for firing the police chief who has done so much for this community. I am tired of leaders just dropping people like they're just bugs. We want our chief back. And I'm not going to make this more clear. We want Chief Bossy back. And I'm not going to stop. You've hurt not just me. You've hurt a bunch of residents, a bunch of neighbors, and you've even hurt the police department. You got to take that back. Because what direction are you going? Down like Lexington? We were going up. But you're making us go down like Lexington. We want our chief back now.
Is it Gino? Last name, F. Paul? G. Paul? Okay. And?
Thank you all for your time. I just, I'm here and just heard Chief Bossy. I've known him ever since 2015. And the level of integrity and leadership, I've got the utmost respect for him and the department. They've, they've, they mean a lot to me. And I just feel bad for the legacy he was trying to set, which is gone in a flip of a switch. And I just ask you to rethink the decision and make a change for the better. Thank you. Thank you.
Ann Fisher Smith.
Hello, my name is Ann Fisher Smith. I'm just here to support Chief Bossy and as a simple private citizen, just looking for some answers of what happened in the last few days, and hopefully the mayor will be able to explain it to us soon. Thank you.
Brad Penn.
Thank you, Mayor. New council, welcome, buckle up, it's going to be fun. I have a very unique perspective to this scenario. I had the honor and the privilege of sitting where you all were in 2011 and 2012. And as much as I worry about you all and the decisions that you're going to have to make over the next couple of years, the position that we were in in 2011 and 12 was equally as horrible or worse. We had plummeting tax revenues, we had a fire department with apparatus that you could, with rust holes that you could literally drive your arm through. We were rounding the corner to the end of the Safer Grant that solved a six firefighter salary issue. We didn't know if we were going to be able to keep them, or we were going to have to fire them. Our police department was in complete shambles. We had lawsuits, threats of lawsuits, rumors of lawsuits. From 2009 to 2012, our average tenure for a Georgetown City Police Officer went from 18 years of service to five. We were a training ground for every other department in the state, to the degree that we toyed around with the idea of a contract that we were going to ask our police officers to sign to maintain their employment with us for five years, or we were going to ask them to pay for their training expenses back. Shortly after 2012, the council and the mayor received a letter of no confidence from our police department. It was signed by almost 80% of the department that we had left. Mayor Barney had no options at that point. The council had no options but to support him. He had to make a change. He had to go a different direction. Why? By necessity, not by want, not by whim. He had to make that change in order to maintain the integrity of the Georgetown Police Department. Fast forward several weeks, months later, I'm on my way to City Hall, to the council chambers, because we were getting ready to swear in a new police chief. Some of you were there. I took three or four steps into council chambers, and what did I see? Three of the four walls of chambers were lined shoulder to shoulder with members of the law enforcement community, not the city of Georgetown. Lexington sent their entire command staff down. As I shook hands, we had members from Frankfurt, from Winchester, from Lawrenceburg, from Versailles, from London, from Somerset. We had members from the State Police Department. We had members from the federal marshals. We had members from the FBI in that room to be there in support of Chief Bossy, our new chief. That's all I needed to know. I had met the man at that point, didn't care, because looking at that room and looking at the support that that man had from the law enforcement community statewide told me everything that I needed to know. In the ten years that went on, we watched a resurrection of our police department. We watched organization, we watched professionalism, and we watched accountability be restored to the Georgetown Police Department. We watched community-based policing, something we had never seen in this city, take place, and the community loved it. We watched Chief Bossy and members of his staff be recognized on both the state stage as well as the national stage. We were no longer the laughing stock of city enforcement in the state of Kentucky. We were highly revered for what we had, and we loved it. The best thing about a police department, and you guys will know, is when you don't get calls about them. The day that happens, that you don't get a call from a complaint from a citizen or a business about a police officer, you know they've done their jobs. So imagine my dismay on Friday, when I received a call from a friend of mine saying, "Hey, can you believe that?" To which my response was, "Well, I don't believe that Epstein hung himself, but what are you talking about?" He said, "Chief Bossy has been relieved of duties." I said, "That's a rumor, can't be true." There's no way that the mayor that I supported would make a decision like that. What did I do, Mayor? I picked up the phone, and I called you. You told me a few things in that phone call. You verified that, yes, he no longer has a job in the city of Georgetown. You also told me that you've been thinking about this for months. Are you kidding me? The one department within this city that is the least controversial, the most well-run professional organization this city has, you've been thinking about replacing that leader for months? My question was what? Wow. Your comment to me was, "I feel like I need to go a different direction." I said, because I'm dumbfounded at that point, I said, "Exactly what direction would that be?" Your comment to me was two-fold. The first part I remember, the second part I took the gist. The first part, you said, "I don't really know, but..." And then you followed it up by some verbiage that led me to believe that you wanted to warn local homegrown control of the police department. Now, now, let me tell you, Mayor, we've been down that road. We've made that mistake before. We are a city at the intersection of 64 and 75, one of the two largest interstates in the entire country. We host Toyota, who is the largest manufacturing facility for Toyota in the North American region, continent. We have a daytime population in the city of Georgetown, it's almost 80,000 people. To make a decision on who's going to lead the police department, the head law enforcement official in a town like this, based on where they were born and raised, is illogical and We are not the main reason. We are the seventh-largest city and the fastest-growing city in the state of Kentucky. These people, and the men and women in blue, deserve better than that. Not only are they better than that, they deserve a plan, a reason that you terminated Bossy, and a plan for where they're going forward. Anything outside of that is a dereliction of duty at this point.
Is there anyone else who did not sign up, like to speak? Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry I didn't get any time to sign up. You're lousy, go ahead and speak, is that correct? Thank you very much. My name is Steven Price. I'm a lifelong resident of Georgetown. And in regards to the comment you just made that you prefer local control of our government, including the police department, I'm with you 100%. I'm born and raised in Georgetown. I know my commitment to Georgetown is because I'm a hometown person, and I know that I could not go to some strange town and perform as well, because I don't know that town. And I know Georgetown, and anybody who's lived here a long time knows Georgetown better. And I commend you for wanting to have local people managing our government. And I'm not going to say much, except I want to offer to you the same paperwork I offered to the past council, the last time you convened. I've got paperwork here regarding the water issue and the sewer issue. And if I may, Mayor Jenkins, may I distribute, may I have it walk across there and hand this paperwork to each of the council members?
If you want to, just leave it there, and we'll just pick it up and take it later, okay?
Okay, well, is it some of you? Okay, I'll leave a pile under there, and some of you got this the last term, some of you didn't get it, so if you didn't get it, it'll be there for you. And let me just say one thing, when I distributed this paper, I was going to show you something that I hesitate to show you, I'm reluctant to show you, but I got frostbite. In the week of Christmas, I got frostbite. Now, I don't know if you've ever seen frostbite. I have never seen frostbite on me or anyone else until the week of this past Christmas, when it got down to six, I'm going to stand, it got down to below zero. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but I know it was mighty cold, and I can show you if you want to look. I'll show you that my finger had frostbite. I don't know if you can see it from where you are, but I have suffered that frostbite because I've been, because I'm not going to say I'm homeless. And the reason I'm homeless is because for decades I have advocated roof water capture and dry earth management of toxic waste, which those practices, if you had listened to me decades ago, you wouldn't have this financial mess now, of trying to wet flush Scott County and trying to supply, and to have to insist that everybody in Georgetown drink the water that you sell, when they can get all the water they need right off the roof. And I'll leave this paperwork about that right over here.
Mr. Mayor, I've been a citizen of Georgetown now, all over seven years. I have seen many changes in them seven years.
Excuse me, would you take my hand, please, sir?
Waiting north cut.
Thank you, sir.
And I've been a, seen many changes here in town, throughout this city, and what I've seen here is just completely wrong. You took a person, when he first came here, he sat out in the parking lot, had he looked around at what was going on in his police department. He saw officers lack of respect, not only with respect for themselves, but the city alone, and the people in it, did not respect the police department. He saw cigarettes laying around on the grounds. Well, Chief Bossy made a set rule. He went again. He took the police department what it is today. He, first thing he did is straightened up the uniforms. You couldn't ask for a better bunch of good-looking uniforms than those I have. I mean, you don't see the pants hanging down over their shoes and everything. They are nice and neat. Why? Because Mr. Bossy, he did a lot of hand-on training. And I'm a member of the CPA. I don't know whether you're familiar with it or not, but you should be. Have you ever been to, have you ever went to a class of the CPA? Why not? Now, CPA class is run by CommUNITY Relations Ryan Hill. In our first class, and a lot of them will continue to do in my class, in the first class, Chief Bossy held the first class. He covered us all what all he did when he first came here. And I'm starting to repeat myself, I apologize for that. But he has turned this police department completely around. There's no leadership, there's no set rules, you know, and the morale is just completely gone. Well, Chief Bossy straightened it out, and he got it down what it is today. And, okay, bear with me here a little bit. Are you aware of what it takes to be a police officer? I'm asking you, Mayor, are you aware of what it takes to be a police officer in Georgetown? Do you know that it takes many hours and days to become a police officer? It's no more putting a uniform on, throwing a gun on your side, and say, "Hey, I'm a cop." Those days are gone. It takes world of training. Here in Georgetown, throughout the state, the other police departments send their officers to Georgetown for training. Why? Because we are one of the best. It don't make sense to me. And my dad was an old country boy from Centiana, Kentucky. And he got up aged, he was the type of guy that repeated himself quite often. But he told me many times, "Don't break, or don't pick what ain't broken." The police department is not broken. If it was, you would not see this many officers and this many people here at this meeting. It's wrong, sir, it is completely wrong. I've got one question to ask you, and I'll quit. Will you affirm or deny that you're in the process, in the future, of destroying these Georgetown Police Department and the insurance department into one out there? I don't hear your answer, sir.
I'll make my comment at the end when you finish, sir. Thank you.
You and the members of council there need to reconsider that, Chief Bossy. He was a man of integrity, honest, and he worked like hell to keep Georgetown Police Department what it is. Department what it is today.
Is there anyone else, okay?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name is Deborah. I'm new to Kentucky. I'm new to Georgetown. And I am so delighted, as a couple of days ago, to be here. Um, I am a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy last year. Outstanding program, everyone should be a part of that, for sure. In the process of going to those classes, I have had a chance to meet Chief Bossy, uh, Bossy and all of, all of you guys. And you couldn't ask for a better group of individuals. I, I, I just, and I'm just done that you would want to change that. Why would you change something that is working so well? You don't need to go into a new direction. The new direction is here. It's already here. And, and you never mentioned this when you were running for mayor. I don't think, am I right? Which really worries me. And I hope that all you council members, I hope that you take the responsibility to really rethink what you're doing. And Mayor, one of the best qualities of a man is when he can admit that he's wrong. Leave it alone, it's working perfectly. Bring Chief Bossy back.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Officer Greg Rodt, Georgetown Police Department. Uh, and I've heard everybody talk and the news and so forth. Uh, I'm a proud member of, a member of the police department, my fellow brothers and sisters. January started year forty-five for me. Uh, and I'm hoping that I just found, really found out that a decision can be made by you all and working together. And I, and I hope that you look at what's happened in the past. Uh, I started my career in nineteen seventy-eight and I've, you know, come to here to Georgetown after I retired, I retired from State Police and several other different agencies. But one of the finest people that I've met was Chief Bossy. I've watched him grow from a young officer, and they call me Pat Paul because I'm older than everybody. But I've watched him grow as, as an officer all the way to, through the ranks and then when he was hired here. One of the reasons why I came to Georgetown was to be a part of this community. I've never met a more pro-police community than this community. But I've also, in the meantime, he's brought these people with integrity, professionalism, uh, commitment, and one of the most important things is community service. And, uh, when I came here, that was one of the biggest things that he, you know, brought to me, and I wanted to be a part of that team. And I'm doggone proud to be a part of that team, especially with all these men and women that, that I've worked with. I've only been here less than three years, but I ask you all is, and, and I understand direction, I understand politics, and I understand races and so forth, but I want you all to understand, this is for our community. I don't live here, but I feel like I'm a member because I, I could have left. But I love it. I love the people, I love the people that I've worked with, and I love the leadership and where it's going and where it has been going with Chief Bossy and the staff members at the helm. So, one of the things before I end is that I hope that you all consider, look at the big picture as where he's brought this agency from. I've seen agencies from all across the state. And I can tell you now that people want to come to Georgetown Police Department, I'm encouraging people to come here. And I'm at towards the end of my career, but because of the, the community and its fast-growing and what they do and what he has committed himself and his fellow officers, uh, the men and women of the Georgetown Police Department, I hope that you all consider, uh, because he's, he's excellent. And he was to say, I'm going somewhere tomorrow, and he'd take Pat Paul with him, I'd go with him, I promise you. I mean, that's the type of man that I think he is, and I hope that you all have the time to reconsider and look at everything and look at what the people have said and what the officers have said. Thank you so much.
My name is Matt McInally. I'm a former member of the Georgetown Citizens Police Academy London Association, also served a term as vice president of that, of group. I would not have done so if it wasn't for the leadership of Chief Mike Bossy. I've watched several officers like, uh, Chief Allgood and Captain Nash when they first came in as officers, and I've seen them rise up through the ranks. And they're a really sturdy bunch. We do cookouts, we did cookouts for them. They were always thankful for our work with, from the CPA to the Board of Officers. We helped the city budget by, we held, uh, five K races. And because Chief Bossy was so respected, we had Lexington police officers coming down here supporting our police department when they didn't have to do so. But they did so for the love of Assistant Chief Mike Bossy when he was the head of the Lexington Police Department. The man's got thirty-five years' experience in law enforcement. You couldn't ask for a better police chief. I've seen police chiefs come and go over the years, and he is one of the great ones. The only, the only number two person I know that, that was a great chief was Craig Birdwell. He was another great chief. But Mike Bossy elevated it from down here to way up here. When you have FBI coming over here and they're taking classes at the police station, that's because of Mike Bossy. That's because of, uh, when Swanigan was Assistant Chief. Now we've got Mr. Allgood, he's Assistant Chief, and he's done an excellent job. But to get rid of somebody who's getting the job done, doesn't make sense. If he's forty and old, why would you fire the guy? You'd only fire the guy if he was old and forty. Doesn't make sense. And I supported you, Mayor, but on this one, this problem, I can't understand the reasoning behind it, but maybe it'll become clear in today's future, but I'd like to say, bring Mike Bossy back. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm like this, I can't, I can't support you if you want to do that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Antoine Palmer's my name. A few things strike me about humanity. People are directly impacted by something, they have the tendency to say something. They're not directly impacted by something, it's kind of mute. A few days ago, I watched a football game Monday night, Lamar Hammond, I'm sure many of you saw it. He had believers and unbelievers praying. Everybody. We have multiple crises that plague this community. Public service is important. I've been in law enforcement fifteen years, the end of next month. So I'm aware of the game, I'm aware of the political aspect of it, I know how it goes. In Lexington, you can almost guarantee if a new mayor comes, a new chief's coming right behind you. It's not anything new, it's just the way, it's the way it works. But it's interesting, we've had water crisis that we've talked about. Not many people showed up for that. There are many single mothers, elderly people in this community that need voices, they can't get out, they need somebody to speak on their behalf. Nobody shows up. But if somebody is directly impacted by something, I've known Chief Bossy for quite some time and when he was Assistant Chief in Lexington. He showed up on calls, I saw him, have a lot of respect for him. This is not an end-all-be-all situation. It's not. Whether you believe it, you may emotionally feel that way, but it's not an end-all-be-all. I've been in law enforcement, like I said, fifteen years. My father was a former chief of police here back in ninety-nine, Bernard Palmer. Then, to me, he done a great job. Some may have other opinions, I don't care. But to me, I think he did a great job. Ninety-nine was a different time. I've had many conversations with him over the past several days and weeks and months. It's not the end of the world. It's not going to be the end of the world. Things will, change is inevitable. That's life. That's the way life goes. But the most important thing that I want us to grasp, you know, I know the mayor's been, uh, attacked and you buy the ticket, you enjoy the ride, that's the way it goes. I mean, I'm, I'm sure he understands that too. Just a part of it, it's a part of being human. We, we're emotionally driven, we get attached to people. But one thing I want us to understand that is this, whether something directly impacts you or whether something does not directly impact you, if you want to be outraged about something, be outraged about everything. Be mad about something, be mad about everything. If it's sad and people pick and choose what they want to be mad about, if you're going to be mad about Chief Bossy being gone, be mad about the water crisis, be mad about the financial impact that many members of this community are going to suffer from. You know, you're talking, I know at one point it was a sixty percent increase, then the last council meeting I came to, it went down to a nineteen percent increase. And at this point, we don't know. We don't know what it's going to be. But if you're going to be mad, be mad about everything. I, I, it bothers me as a person that we have a tendency to pick and choose what we want to be angry about and what we're going to lash out against somebody else about. And then it begs me to ask the question, are you really mad? Are you really mad you're going to pick and choose about what you're going to be mad about? So I'm going to be mad about the chief being gone, but I'm not going to be mad about the single mother that's going to have to pick between a water bill and groceries. That's what I'm saying, sir. If you are going to be mad about something, be mad about everything. God bless you.
Good morning. Good evening, Mayor Jenkins. It's going to be hard to say, I've called you Mr. Jenkins my entire life. I'm Scott Manford, you knew me as David. I wasn't going to speak tonight, uh, but I've been receiving texts from my family. I was born and raised here. And growing up under your tutelage, uh, you as a referee, I recalled two distinct things in, in my life with you. I paddling in sixth grade and a technical as a coach, and I deserve both. So I'd like to say, as I've been getting texts from my family, my family is really concerned about the direction that you're going to go, it appears. I'm waiting to hear your comments. But I will tell you, um, this police department and the police department that was built by Chief Bossy is good and successful and service-oriented because of who Mike Bossy is, is human being. And so I know it's a tough job, I, I know your plate is absolutely jam-packed. I would just like you to reconsider your decision. That's all I'm asking. If, if there's something that we're not aware of, please, we'd like to hear that. But in basketball, I'm sure you overturned a few decisions that you made in your career. I think that's what the folks are asking for today. That's all.
Yes, sir. I know I was up here before, but I have just been sent something from, uh, the channel L F eighteen's news. Would you like to take a recess and read that before I read it to you and ask you about it, if it concerns your stepson? No? Okay, then I'll read it. It says on here, when about, when asked about if Bossy told L F eighteen that Junior once brought his stepson, Josh Pierce, into the Georgetown Police Department and told Bossy to interview him for a job with the department. Bossy didn't hire Pierce. Pierce was a Kentucky, excuse me, a Kentucky State Police Trooper under internal investigations for allegations of sending inappropriate images to women while on and off duty. He eventually allowed him to quit before he was fired. Now, let me ask you something. Did that have anything to do with why you let Chief Bossy go? With no explanation to him, to anybody? Did you meet Chief Bossy in person to personally fire him? Or did you just call him, or did you just text him? Could you answer that for us too, please? No, no response? That's what I figured. Thank you.
I know you already heard me talk once. But I'm back. I may not be part of the police department, but I back the blue, no matter what. And our boss, what she said is a personal reason? You don't fire the chief over a friggin' personal reason. That's stupid. That's stupid for you to do that. Yeah, you can look down at your paper all you want, you can wiggle your feet. Our boss did nothing to you. Nothing. He has been a good chief. He has straightened up Lexington. He has straightened up us. And the direction you were going, you're going just like Lexington right now with forty-three homicides. So reconsider, because I know Georgetown right now is very unhappy with you, and we're probably ready to kick you out.
My name is Jeffrey Norman. May I like to apologize to you? Because people are saying some mean stuff up here. Y'all voted for you, I have faith in you, and I know you'll make the right decision. I've worked with, uh, police chief and assistant chief. They helped me out a lot as far as our church went, as far as security went. I know you'll make the right decision, but I'd like to apologize to you because some of these people that's come out here didn't have all that angst from the last mayor. So I'd just like to apologize to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is William Mason. I'm a deputy jailer and also I'm a constable in District Five. First of all, I've been on both sides of the fence. Like I said, Mr. Allgood and Nash, they are great people, there's Harris over there. I interact with a lot of these guys. But one thing I, I can tell you from everybody's over talking about the experience that they have, because, I'm going to keep it one hundred, because of the color of your skin, I can say totally different how I've been treated as a black man. So, so y'all can say, you can grab, it's, it's, I know it's about backing the blue, but no, it's, it's about backing everybody as a whole, as a whole. Police officer, chief of police, garbage man, whatever it is, it's about coming together. We keep on standing, everybody's in here standing divided. There's some good officers over here that I would do anything for, but some of them I wouldn't. If we're going to keep the one hundred, some of them are disrespectful, they do not treat people right. Yeah, so you can say no all you want, but I'm saying from my experience, but I'm saying there's a lot of good ones. So if we're going to come together, Mr. Jenkins was my teacher, and I put him through hell, and he treated me right and fairly. And I'm saying, give him the opportunity first. Like I said, Mr. Bossy, he's a great guy, but I believe this guy, anytime I work in the community for free, I've seen him more than anybody. When my, one of my brothers passed away, he called and checked on him and said, could he do anything? So I'm saying, as everybody, you can, police officer, you can be mad at me, you don't never have to talk to me again. I do not care because I'm standing on the behalf of the fact, just give this man an opportunity first. If he wants to go in a different direction, let him try and see what happens. Two good men over here. There's a lot of good men over here, but there's a lot of people in this community that won't come up and speak because they're scared because it's a waste of time. So whether y'all going to really wake up and come together as one and love each other and just see what happens? If he made a mistake, him and God's going to deal with that. But when you want to sit there and, and talk about, you're talking about how great it is for you, but how great is it for me? When I stand up here, I'm talking to everybody. Are you, you talking about, uh, you ashamed with him, but all this stuff that's been going on for the late, uh, last eight years? I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm talking about in the community... I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm talking about in the community and the administration and stuff like that. What's been going on?
Specifically tell us. We wanna know.
Do you want, do you wanna know? Because you should know if you was out in the community and worrying about everybody instead of just the people that, I'm gonna be rude, that looks like you and thinks like you and acts like you.
This is not racist.
It's not a racist thing, but I'm just telling you, from a black man, you can't tell me to change what I think.
Or experience.
It has a lot of it.
Folks, let's, excuse me, this is public comment. The person at the podium is the only person who should be speaking.
So what I'm saying, as anybody that knows me, it's not about the color of your skin. If I say I love you, I love you to life. But when are we gonna sit here and just give the man the opportunity? You're ready to hang him on the cross and you haven't did enough yet. Yes, I understand, Mr. He's a great guy. I know a lot of law enforcement people that talk highly of him, but I think, Mr., I think he would be good for, to take his place, because he's been under Bossy long enough, so give him a shot. So keep up the good work, council, everybody. Do what you gotta do to make a difference for everybody, just not for certain people. It's not about a black and white thing. It's about everybody.
Okay, thank you for your comments at this time.
One more.
Good evening. My name is Robert Webb. I am originally from Lexington, Kentucky. I've been living here in Georgetown, Scott County, for a little over four years. And one of the unique things I like about this place, Georgetown, Scott County, I can presently sit in my backyard and listen to the grass grow. But in Lexington, I can't even sit on the front porch. I worked on the fire department for thirty years. I just retired from the post office after forty-two. Seen a lot. Mike Bossy, I've known for a while. He was a detective with my brother in Lexington. When I came to Georgetown, about every other month, I'd go by Sheriff's Department, I'd go by the police department, and I'd drop them off desserts. And they say, thank you. It's not about thank you. I just appreciate. When I come home late at night, I see all those blue lights up there, up and down the street because crabs trying to take a toll. The police department chief, Bossy and his guys and women are running them out of here. Decisions is being made. Just as yourselves, was God in it?
Right.
If we don't have God in things that we need to do, this is not about racism at this present time. If you wanna talk about racism, I can take you to outside counties around here and show you some racism. But this is not about racism here in Scott County. I haven't been here that long, but this is not about racism. I'm free to say that it's about other things. I don't know because I haven't been here that long. But if a decision is to be made, decisions can't be reversed. This man is a, he's been a decent person. Chief Allgood, great guy. The sheriffs, great guys. All these people, they're great guys. Give him a chance. It's better than what it used to be. I didn't live it, but I heard. Just give him a chance. Put God in it. And just remember, kiss. Just keep it simple saying, thank you.
Okay, again, thank you for your comments, and it's been widely noted and will be considered. At this time, I've both printed merit comments and additional comments to make later, but we will start with the printed items as listed. As you know, the position of the city clerk was previously an elected position, but the city council took the steps making this an appointed position. Now that the elected term has ended, I need to appoint Tracy Hoffman as our city clerk, and I've done this V I A executive order. City council must approve this appointment. Is there a motion to approve?
Excuse me, who made the motion?
Okay, Ms. Tackin made the motion. Second, Ms. Millie?
Council, please remember your microphones. Thank you.
Motion, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The motion's been made.
The motion's been made in second, therefore the actions being made. Now that Tracy has been appointed city clerk, she must take the oath of office. Please come forward, Tracy.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this common world, and be faithful and true to the common rest of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to do the best my ability, the office of according to the law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of this present constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with any friends within the state, nor I have acted, nor I have stood and suffered a challenge to fight a duel with any friends, nor I have acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided, assisted, or trusted, thus affiliated so have been God.
Thank you once again, and that, once again, thank you for your comments, and I've heard what you've said, and will take that in as an advisement. I wanna say that at this point in time, first of all, is that foremost, I would like to thank Chief Mike Bossy for over thirty years of service to the law, and for in over ten years as service to the citizens of Georgetown. Assistant Chief Darren Allgood will serve as interim chief of police while we prepare the selection process for new police chief. This election process will be open to internal candidates from within the Georgetown Police Department. My desire is to promote from within the ranks of Georgetown Police Department. I am steadfast in my commitment to the office of the Georgetown Police Department, and my administration will continue to work to ensure that we offer a competitive wage, not only to attract well-qualified candidates, but keep the professional officers we are blessed to have. Okay, some other short comments. As you all know, that we have open city hall up for where we can, you can now come and see us later on, coming up in the next few weeks. We'll get everybody in place staff-wise. We'll have an open house where you can come and actually talk to us. And my door is always open. I made that clear. And that if you wanna come talk to me, I don't care what it is about, you can come talk to me. And I made that clear this morning when I talked to Chief Allgood and Captain Nats. And I understand, but I want you to know that my door is always open. Secondly, that I went early this week and actually saw the flooding, which occurred down on Broadway, and I went Public Works, Mr. Bruin, and my city engineer, Mr. Highstreet, excuse me, Hightower, we went out and tried to find out what could we do to alleviate that situation, because that's a problem. And we are aware, I've made some visits to those houses and let them know that we are aware of that, and we're gonna work steadfast to do that. Another point to make here is, a big concern is the water issue. We're gonna fight this. We're gonna take all resources that we can have to fight this. I know you're upset about this. We're upset about this, and we're not gonna quit fighting. I'll tell you what we're doing thus far. At this point in time, we have a meeting set up with the authorities from the state, where they're gonna come in and actually, we're gonna sit down and make some perimeters as to find out what happened. Also, we've been working behind the scenes to get some outside funding so we can bring this debt down. I'm vigorously going to really work at getting that done, because I think it's important to you all, because we really wanna make sure that our citizens get the best quality water service they can get at a price that they can afford. Secondly, on that point, I've also, I'm talking with one of the assistants to the governor, and he is going to hopefully set me up an appointment soon where I can go and talk to the governor for sure about this situation with us. Again, I'm gonna use all, we're gonna use all the resources we can to compact this situation. I know that another issue that everybody's been talking about is the trash. I can, and talk with people on the campaign trail and talk with people now, they're frustrated. And so my predecessor said that he didn't have much luck getting them to come to the table. And, but I'm gonna tell you this. We have went a little step beyond that. We are gonna have set up a meeting with them. I called them, and I said, I don't wanna talk to you on the phone. I wanna have a face-to-face meeting with you. So they're gonna come to the office of the mayor of the city of Georgetown, and we're gonna sit down and put up a correction action plan, where we're gonna state what is the issues. We want them to actually put a, we're gonna put a timeline on what these issues need to be addressed, and we're gonna make sure you know in a timely fashion when they're gonna address those issues. We're gonna be working with some council work sessions on both of these issues in the coming future. And once again, that my task here is difficult. I'm finding that out. I thought teaching middle school kids for forty-six years was tough, but I'm finding out being married may be tougher. And I know the frustration people have. Like again, I wanna make sure you understand, my door is always open, and I'm gonna do the best I can. And I do, I do have God in my presence. As I mentioned in my, when I took oath of office, I will continue to look to heaven for which comes my help. And I have not, I will do my best to make the best decisions I can for the people. And if I'm wrong, then I'll do what I can to correct what I can. But I also want to let you understand that everything we do here is for the people of Georgetown. Thank you very much. All right, let's move right on with, next on our agenda is G M W S S, and I would ask Chase to come forward and explain these items.
Thank you, Mayor. Georgetown Municipal has two purchase orders for your consideration tonight. First is a purchase order to Lobo in the amount of $11,900. This is a replacement for a variable frequency drive for one of our pumps at wastewater treatment plant one. Lobo was the only respondent for this work, and this is a budget item of our plant operations budget. This has been approved by the board of commissioners and is recommended to council for consideration.
Mayor, can we pause just a minute until agreement clears a little bit?
Okay.
Thank you. Take any questions you have on that first purchase order.
A motion? A motion has been made in second. Are there any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. Second purchase order is for duty construction in the amount of $1,942,025.15. This is for work completed on the upgrade and expansion of plant one during the month of November. This is for accommodation of stored materials and work on multiple structures, concrete and steel work to continue to move that project forward. Happy to take any questions you have on that purchase order.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Yes, Mayor.
Question. Do you have an idea at this point in time, January, where we are with the construction of wastewater treatment? Are we ahead of schedule still?
I believe since we've restarted the project, we're much further ahead than what are we anticipating based on just work complete and pay requests received and materials taken inventory of. As far as percentage, I can get you that number, and I can send that to council.
A motion has been made in second. Are there any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Georgetown Police Department, we have some grant-related action and purchases, and I would ask that the Georgetown Police Staff approach the podium as necessary to outline the actions requested tonight.
The first one is requesting the acceptance of the Volka ARPA grant funding.
I'll go ahead and speak to this one a little bit. Council, you'll recall that it's called Volka ARPA. It's a little confusing. It's American Rescue Plan funding that was additionally allocated to Volka funding. So Volka funding has been cut. Volka is Victims of Crime Act funding that helps us afford our victims advocates in Georgetown Police Department. It's been a real asset to the department, and that funding has declined over the years. It's federal funding, and you know, we really don't have control over its decline, but the state general assembly allocated additional ARPA funds to that to kind of provide that relief. So our department took the initiative to apply for that funding, and this will allow us to add a gun crimes detective. Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. We've got a number of grants there, so this will allow us to add a gun crimes detective to the department. The city will still have, as you can see in your resolution, some financial buy-in, but it will substantially cover that salary.
Do you need a motion?
I'm making a motion to accept it.
I'll second.
There has been motion, it has been seconded. Are there any first questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Before I ask city clerk to, to complete the first reading of the ordinance, I would like to clarify this proposed position of the public information officer is a city hall position, not a police department position. This personnel ordinance was originally listed under police department because of the additional officer, and we left the ordinance in this section by the state.
Counsel, each of you at your stations, you have a proposed job description for the position of public information officer. This is a position that the mayor, in the mayor's vision, he would like to have someone who can increase citizen and community engagement and interaction, and he wants a person who is going to be there to put out his communications for him. I know in the efforts of transparency,
Um, I know in the efforts of transparency, he's really interested in having a weekly release from what's going on in city hall. This person would also manage our website, oversee all of our social media sites. Um, as you may know, the Georgetown Fire Department has their own Facebook page. Georgetown Police Department has their own Facebook page. This person would just constantly be monitoring all of those to make sure that the content is consistent with the city's vision. Um, this person would also be asked to create an initiative to track citizens' satisfaction in our services. Um, it would, it'd be, it would be hopeful that this would, um, improve communications in all departments and across our divisions. This person could facilitate access to our public meetings. Um, for example, we have hired someone tonight to be able to do that for us. This person should be able to take that role on. And then they would also manage our information technology and communication provider relationships. We use NetGame to handle our IT right now. This person would interact with them. Civic Plus is our website. They would make sure that's constantly maintained, taking care of, and our phone systems.
Thank you. I have a couple, I have at least one question for you, Mayor. I had one for you, so I didn't get to tell you much at all. Sorry if I did. Can you, um, I see the, um, sorry.
Technology.
On the sheet of paper that we have, you have, uh, grade eleven. What's the salary range?
For grade eleven?
On grade eleven?
It is seventy-nine thousand up to one hundred and six thousand.
And Mayor, I don't know if I should direct this towards me or you. Uh, with, with the chief administrative officer position. The decision that was made last, late last week on the chief administrative officer position, is that going to be filled or do we need to abolish that position?
Uh, no, what we just deal with that, we just stop funding it. That's all we do. Okay? It, it's still on the books. If later we think we need that, we can always put, put that in later if that's needed. But as of right now, we just stop funding it.
So the, the intent right now is to not fill that position, but we're gonna leave it open?
Yes.
In essence, what, what is expected to happen there is when council approves the budget, um, you're approving the monies to be in those positions for them to be funded. And council could elect not to fund that position.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
In order to amend section two dash one-one of the code of ordinances to add one police officer and create the position of public information officer. Summary, one, amend section two dash one-one subsection C of the code of ordinances to add one police officer and create the position of public information officer at grade eleven. Two, provide for repeated and consistent ordinances, severability of provisions on effective date upon passage of publication. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, one hundred North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www georgetownkay dot gov. Enter dates to publish their rep the first time, January ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor, if I could clarify one thing also, so the police officer added under that ordinance is the officer that is funded through that grant. So that allows us to add that headcount, um, but I did want to just clarify that.
We spoke earlier about this, um, public information officer, um, earlier today. Could you, could you speak to why you think that this position could be quite helpful to the administration?
So I think, I think the question isn't asked by a couple people. We already have social media accounts, we already manage a website, and, and all of those things have been done kind of by committee and, you know, for lack of better terms, willingly. It, it's been a, a very not organized operation. And I think, um, having a clear message, and I know Mayor Jenkins, um, has taken transparency seriously in his campaign. And I think, um, the more information that we can succinctly get to the public, it's important. The other thing that is important is our, like, like mentioned by Megan, our police department and fire department maintain their own pages. Um, but this person would, they all post so that the message is uniform from the city so that the public is not getting any, any confused messaging. The message will be uniform from city hall, GPD, GFD, any departments that maintain their own pages. Um, the other thing that's important is that we, we have somebody very clearly communicating to the public what the page is for. Um, many of you know that this is an open meeting. Everything that occurs on the city page is, uh, it's a public page, it's public forum. So we have to make sure we're, um, respecting the integrity of that public forum and following all open records, uh, requirements. So I think having somebody dedicated to that will be, uh, an asset to both the community and to the, to the local government.
My question is, has there been any concerns to this point with those departments?
No, I, I don't think so. I, I think everybody does a good job managing their social media, but, um, once again, if, if we at city hall have to learn about something on a, on a Facebook page from another department and we're getting calls from the public, um, the public will quickly get exhausted by getting different messages. And I think this, this kind of position is intended to ensure that, um, all two hundred, however many we're at now, city employees have the same message, um, when, when, uh, communicating with the public.
Am I correct in, in thinking that some of this position might, uh, take care of some of what Andrew Hartley took care of in the past? And this might help with, with those duties as well?
Yes, I mean, uh, that position covered, uh, a multitude of duties. It was a very, uh, Swiss Army knife-like position. Um, but yes, a lot of, a lot of these duties, uh, translate to this position.
You have a question. How do we run the grade level with this position?
We, um, Megan prepared the job description and asked the mayor if this was a director level position, and that's the typical grade that we, we go with. We have a couple that are ten, and, and obviously we have one of the most that was a twelve. Um, but I think the question was more related to, do you want this position to be director level?
Okay. Another question, would part of this person's role be data analytics?
I guess the one, the one component that Megan mentioned, uh, kind of community satisfaction. Uh, but are you referring to data analytics as in like revenues, expenditures, that kind of stuff? I don't think it was contemplated that that would be part of the position.
Okay, next, uh, we have the, some information of, of, is it? Excuse me, uh, municipal order approving the purchase of tasers, is that next? Okay.
Uh, we're requesting purchase of new tasers because several of the tasers that we have at the police department now are over ten years old. Uh, they're known for being produced. It's hard to get, uh, parts and replacements to get the tasers that we have that are that old, so it's hard to get those, um, function again for the officers. Uh, the ones that we can get are refurbished, since it's really not cost-effective. So we're asking to get, um, some newer tasers for the officers.
And I wanted to speak to the funding of this. Uh, we applied for and received a law enforcement protection program grant that is covering a hundred thirteen thousand of the cost, um, which leaves about fifty-one thousand that we'll have to take out of general fund dollars. Um, so the majority of this will be funded by grant funding. And, uh, it is a sole source. Uh, the documentation is in there. There's, um, Axon is the only manufacturer of taser, which is the nationally-used brand for law enforcement for, uh, non-lethal energy weapons, so.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept it.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded.
I have a question.
So do these take, I'm sorry, okay. Do these tasers have, um, a warranty with it? And is there gonna be any other expense to it, like yearly?
I can speak for that. So, uh, this grant covers a five-year period of tasers. Through that five-year period, there is a warranty to it. And once that five-year period is done, we have the option of selling back those tasers that we have and renewing, uh, the old tasers for new equipment that will not be.
Okay.
Uh, the recurring cost would be the taser cartridges that we use for, uh, recertification, which happens every two years.
Do you know what the cost of that is?
It's around eight thousand dollars for the entire department to recertify.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So the motion has been made and seconded. Are there no further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Next is, uh, uh, resolution, um, accepting vows against women's, uh, grant funding?
Uh, I'll step in on this one. Um, this is a recurring grant. This is our second year. We receive partial funding for a detective, uh, who oversees the activities with violence against women. We have several detectives that participate in those activities, but one that kind of oversees the program and, and record-keeping for the grant. Uh, it is partial grant funding. The resolution mentions the amount that we have to, um, fund from the city level, but it does allow us to, um, have this additional officer. And again, this is a renewal program that we already have.
Is women making a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any?
Is this one the hard to do?
Are there any further questions?
I think I did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Now, the municipal order approving the purchase of drones.
We're just tag teaming up here. I wanted to let you know, uh, we have, again, a sole source for the purchase of an indoor drone, uh, the cost of seventeen thousand six sixty-nine. We did receive a private donation, um, from Toyota through our Citizens Police Academy of twenty-five thousand to pay for the drone and related training. So it will be no cost to the city for this. However, we did, um, verify the sole source documentation and we won the equipment. So council needs to approve and purchase.
Motion has been made and seconded. If there's no further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Public Works, municipal order approving the surplus of vehicles.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Uh, we have five vehicles that need to be surplus so they can go back to Enterprise and be sold. Back in October, we took possession of five new ones. We finally got them outfitted with lights and radios and, uh, striping. So we just need to get these surplus so we can get them sold.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. A for-financed resolution regarding bank and invested accounts, uh, secretaries?
Yes, this is just a routine procedure when we have, uh, newly-elected mayor. Uh, we need to, we will remove, uh, the previous mayor and executive assistant from our banking accounts and add Mayor Jenkins as a signer at this time. Uh, we're not gonna add the position of executive assistant. Um, if we think that needs to be added later, we will come back for a updated resolution. But just to update all of our signatures with the banks.
Thank you.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion is made.
Second, Mayor.
Motion is seconded. Are there any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All they oppose? The motion carries. We now, we have reached to the end of our agenda, and we're now welcome, uh, council comments. Uh, Mr. Showalter, can I start with you?
For the first meeting. I've listened to every comment that's been made tonight. I think it's very important. I know Connie, uh, I, myself. Worked very closely with Andrew Hartley and Chief Policy, um, over the last ten-plus years. Andrew first as city attorney and then as chief administrative officer, chief policy. As a police chief that is probably one of the two best police chiefs we've ever had in the city of Georgetown. Probably one of the two best department heads we've, uh, that we've had in the city of Georgetown. Those guys will never be forgotten. I'll make sure of it as long as I have a voice. Am I disappointed? One hundred percent. One hundred percent disappointed in how this, I think we've, an issue has been created that could have been avoided. And my fear now is for the police officers that remain. And if I know Chief Policy, I think Chief Policy still has some life left in him and more to give. And my biggest concern right now is Chief Policy getting another police chief position in their surrounding community and taking officers with them. So I think we gotta keep a very close eye on things as we move forward. That's a fear. I hope it doesn't come true. Mayor, uh, thank you for the first meeting. Thank you for your leadership you provided tonight. We're gonna get through this. We're gonna get through it. Thank you.
Miss Conway?
I probably don't need this microphone. I was on the council eight years ago, and I served for two terms, four years. People continually ask me this go-round when I started campaigning. Why do you want to do this again? My answer is I have unfinished business. My business eight years ago was concentrating on the safety of Georgetown, particularly on West Main Street with.
Millie goes? Millie, excuse me. We need the microphone for the live stream. That's okay. You're gonna have to start over.
Oh, well, you know. I've been on the council, I was on the council eight years ago for a term of two terms, which is four years. I've been off for four years, and I always ask why? Would you want to do this again? My answer is I have unfinished business. My main concern then, and it took four years, was West Main Street. We, I did receive some of the money for a tap grant, but unfortunately, and I'm sure it was an engineering situation, decision, it was, um, to be started at the bridge, for the bridge to be repaired and that beautiful rock entrance to Georgetown, which is very attractive. But at that point, there were two sidewalks there, and there's still none at Montgomery Avenue. I constantly, because I live in that area on West Main, a little bit past Tucker Funeral Home, constantly see children being pushed in baby strollers, parents walking in the street that don't have a vehicle, buying groceries that save a lot, going downtown with not a safe place to walk. And I'm still hoping that we can, I was told at that point there'd be three phases. One would have to start downtown where the bridge is, and the second one further up. And the third one is, in my opinion, the most important one, where there were no sidewalks on either side, was up there where Crown Point and Claremont Apartments, and people that don't have vehicles can stay out of the road. Kids can stop riding their bicycles in the road. We need sidewalks. So I'm gonna keep pounding that drum, and hopefully I'll make better progress in this term. Thank you.
Ms. Brady?
I'm sorry, I have a cold. But I'm very happy that the public came out. The reason I'm on the city council is for the community to, I've heard everybody's comments, take them into consideration. I don't know if it'll come up, if it will come to a vote for policy or not, if, you know. Uh, I know both men. Um, they're good people, they really are. I know it was hard. I talked to the mayor about it, and I know it was a hard decision for him. I mean, it's not easy to let someone go and for them to, you know, lose their job. But I know in my heart that he is, he really is trying to make a new direction. And what he said, he said his door is open, so please take that opportunity and go talk to him. He will tell you. I don't think there's some things that he can probably just discuss out in, you know, this, the public like this, but just please, I know you're. But just please, I know you're, please give him a chance, you know. Give me a chance, give all of us a chance, the new ones, the old ones. Come in, the promotions. I work with some of you people too and I love the police department. I apologize, like I said, but I know it's a tough decision for him. And like I said, they are good men. Chief Bossy's a good man. Mr. Hartley's a good man. I'm still learning, I'm going to the classes and I'm learning what the council can do, what the mayor can do, what the mayor can't do, what the council can't do. But if, you know, if it comes down to a vote, if the council opens this up or whatever, I promise I'm listening to all the comments of the, of the community and I will take it into consideration because I'm human too and I, I don't like to see someone lose their job also.
Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I did work under Chief Bossy. He was a great man. I'm sorry, is a great man, excuse me. I worked under six chiefs over 20 years. Some that were really good, Bernard Palmer being one of them. Some of them, not so. But, you know, you take the good with the bad. And with the current situation, I believe in Chief Allgood because I worked with him. I worked for Chief Bossy, he was a great, a great man, won't take anything away from him. He did phenomenal with this police department. You know, I hope with Chief Allgood that he continues to allow that police department to soar. That's my hope for that. Be there to help him in any way that I can and the officers as well. Greg Hampton and I had a meeting this morning on Public Works Committee with Robert Bruin, discussed about the current salt situation from the past, the cold and the snow that we had. 200 ton, in order to 200 ton in, or 400 ton, excuse me. So we, they use 200, so we're back up to full strength on salt. And those guys are ready to go, should we have another spell like that again. So that's all I've got, thank you.
Ms. Havlin?
I've said it two or three times now, when we've had gatherings of a lot of people, civic engagement is absolutely something I value. I'm looking forward to having a packed city council house every time. The issues we deal with are personal because they affect you. Your tax dollars are affecting you. Who is in leadership positions affects you. And I hear you and I pledge to you that I'm going to do the best I can going forward to make the wisest, most prudent stewardship-related decisions possible. I could not have more admiration for Chief Bossy and the work that he did and the leadership he gave the police department. It is always sad to me personally when somebody I admire that much is terminated. Correct me if I'm wrong, Devon, but some of the things that were said by people who came up to the microphone and directed to city council, I don't believe it's legal for us to be able to overturn a position because that is totally vested in the mayor's purview. Is that correct assumption?
That's correct. In the mayor council form of government, the executive, the mayor is, is fully vested with promotional, emotional, employment termination actions. The only action that council actually related to both positions at issue right now, the council does affirm the appointment of a handful of officials by statute and those are fire chief, police chief, city clerk, I believe, and city administrator, and there's, there's one more. So cities can also create additional non-elected officers and those have to be approved by the council. But the ultimate employment actions are only vested in the mayor and the mayor council form of government.
Thank you. I thought that was an important clarification because city council, this is out of our hands. The mayor's made a decision and we cannot overturn that. And the same with the work ethic of Mr. Hartley. I've written to both Chief Bossy and Andrew Hartley and told them how much I appreciated the years and years of dedicated work that they gave to the city. And I wanted them to feel affirmed and I offered them a blessing for them as they go forward and follow their vocational passions elsewhere. I'm looking forward to a new administration. I'm looking forward to Mayor Jenkins and the leadership he's going to be able to afford us. I'm very aware that anytime there's a transition, there are going to be disruptions. There are going to be differences of opinions. But this city council, I know is going to be dedicated to come together and to deliberate and to discern and to try to work together as a team so that we can move forward with the police department, with the fire department, with public works. Because we have a lot of things that we need to focus on. We need to get this water debacle in focus and financed and moving forward. We need to get the flooding on South Broadway taken care of and that is being worked on from an engineering standpoint, we're moving forward on that. We need to make sure that we get this republic trash, ongoing mess. I know my own trash wasn't picked up for probably 10 days and to all of us, I've heard a lot of people who still have complaints. I'm glad that the mayor is moving towards an, an action plan for that. And so we have a lot of city business that is pressing and I know that you all are concerned about that and so are we. I do want to say that I experienced the swearing ceremony at Georgetown College and it was a wonderful, inspiring experience if you were there. It made each of us not only feel special and honored, but it also made us feel accountable. Anytime you put people in a position where they feel as though they've been given an honored position, then they feel accountable to live up to that honor. And I do feel that accountability and I want to continue to offer that to the council and to our new mayor because he's got a tough job ahead of him. He's got hard decisions to make and I'm going to do my best to give him the best and wisest advice that I have and I know everybody else on council will as well. So we are a team and we're going to do what we can as a team to help Georgetown be safe and to help Georgetown prosper. I want a community center and we want to talk about what, what might be my big dream going, going ahead. But we have so many financial things right now that we have to pay attention to. But that's not a lost cause and I do, I do know that it's something that Mayor Jenkins is very interested in. And as soon as we can, we're going to start trying to focus on that. We need it and it's a very important thing for our youth in our community. So thank you for coming tonight and I'll do my best.
Wow, what a first meeting. You know, like Willow, I appreciate everyone's input tonight, comments. I value those, I have always valued those, I'm starting my second term. You know, I'm still learning what's, you know, the ins and outs and, you know, I, in those first two years, you know, I talked a lot to Chief Bossy and to Andrew. They are great people, you know, I will always respect them. And, you know, I, I wish them the utmost best in their future. But we have to move on and, and this council and the mayor, we need to concentrate on everyone in Georgetown, making sure we have the services that are needed, making sure that we increase our tax base and not through the citizens, but by other means. We have a lot of issues. Water rates, we need to address soon. Stormwater, water runoff. I think this council needs to take up impact fees as soon as possible. We need to get that done. Sanitation and trash, believe me. My phone has blown up since Christmas with this issue. And I can assure you that Councilman Stone and myself, we take this at heart because we are on the Public Works Committee. We don't take this lightly. We're listening, we're going to do something about it. And, you know, I drove around last Sunday just looking at the issues at hand and I did see it. And, you know, I, I'm going to work and I've talked to the mayor and I still want to be involved going forward with this. I want to see it resolved. You know, this is on us. We've got to take care of this for everyone out there. And I will make sure of that. In closing, the officers that are, there's a few still here, but I just want to recognize them today. Today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Your work is very important, we appreciate what you do. Thank you for your service and your commitment to this community and. And just on a personal note, I don't know if my brother's still watching or not, but I want to wish him the same too. So, thank you.
Ms. Allan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm recovering from a cold as well that I received from my wife, so she's probably watching. Newly elected to the council, this is my first meeting. The thing I enjoyed the most about this is seeing you guys come out and talk. You have concerns, you should be able to voice those concerns. We need to listen to those concerns. This isn't about us, this is about our community and the things that affect you guys. So I've taken a lot of notes and I'm going to, want to dive deeper into this because every decision that is made impacts us. We're not going to be able to make decisions that everybody's going to be happy with. But whenever, there are challenges that you have as a result of the decisions, I want to hear about those, we want to hear about those, just like you're doing tonight. And don't stop. Don't wait for two weeks to come back. We all have our numbers that should be posted now on the website. My email just came up today, so I apologize for that, somebody was trying to get in touch with me. As far as Chief Bossy, I have tremendous amount of respect for Chief Bossy. During COVID, I put together a task force of 45 members of this community. The mayor, the judge, law enforcement, school board, a lot of different people. We sat down over an eight-week period and we worked on diversity for our community. We learned a lot about ourselves, we learned a lot about each other and Chief Bossy was part of that group. He shared a lot of things with us that helped us to grow, helped us to learn about each other. So yes, I have a lot of respect for Chief Bossy. I have completed citizens' police academy. Very, very informative program and I would ask that each of you participate in that. You learn a lot. Again, I want to go back and, and say that I will reflect on tonight's meeting. It's been very informative for me. The one thing that I ran on was planning. Having retired from Toyota, I feel like I'm a good planner. And I'll say that and I'm probably going to get challenged and I'll ask you, what's your plan? Give me a little bit of time to get my hands around some of these issues and talk. I need to see it on paper. That's how I work. So I want to start seeing some of these issues that we're talking about on paper. It gives us good talking points and it helps you to understand where are we in this? Instead of saying, well, we're a little bit ahead, we're a little bit behind, what the heck does that mean? We owe that to you guys. Thank you again for coming out and I love this. So thank you, be patient with me because I am learning my new role. Thank you.
Ms. Tapp.
Yes, I would like to say that I'm going to go on record, I've sat on council with Brad Pan for four years and I very. But I just want to say that I have nothing but the utmost respect for Chief Bossy and actually all of our directors that are in the city of Georgetown. Our city employees are the backbone of our city and they do a tremendous job. They're good at what they do. Yes, I'm very sad that Chief Bossy is no longer our chief of police. Mayor Jenkins does have the right to do that. He has the right to have a transition team and shocked, yes. But I also know that Chief Bossy was a man of leadership and that's what he taught the, the men and women of our police department. So I don't have a doubt that we'll have good leadership there because they've learned from the best. So moving forward, I know that's going to happen. I look forward to helping work on the, the water issue and the stormwater. Stormwater's been around for a long time, I want to say probably 14 years. And flooding down Clayton Broadway has been there since I was three years old. But it's gotten worse. Hopefully that's something that can be addressed and I also think that the water and sewer issue needs to be addressed as well. And just giving Mayor Jenkins opportunity to get acclimated in what he's doing. There's a lot on his plate and he's got a lot of good people around him that can help him. And, and he said he would surround himself with good people like that because he doesn't know everything and he said that as well. So I look forward to moving forward and working with our new council and, and our old council and hopefully we'll come together and do a good job and, because I've lived here all my life as well and I love my community and I love serving it. So I'm open, anytime anyone wants to ask anything, I'm available. Thank you.
If there's none other else, nothing else for the city council, we stand adjourned.